Are you ready? I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. We're at the approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda is recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Voting is open. Sorry, it's open, yes.
It's not.
Ms. Jessie, I can cast your vote manually if you want to refresh.
Ah, where is refresh? F5. Yeah, I was into...now I'm back to the same screen that I had before. So should I try this?
I can just take your vote manually, Ms. Jessie, if you'd like. How do you vote, Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Vote yes.
The vote is six yes, two absent Deutsch and Williams. Motion passed.
And we're on to motion to enter closed session. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Codes 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board to enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss the appointment and release of specific employees under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711, A1, and 8. Two, to discuss and take action on student disciplinary matters relating to the long-term suspension and placement appeals of specific students under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711, A2, and 8. Three, to discuss the legal counsel and staff, the acquisition of real property for school sites in the Cherry Hill and Yorkshire areas under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711, A3, 6, and 8. Four, to discuss legal counsel and specific legal matters and the investment of public funds relative to the contract awards for specific construction projects under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711, A6, 8, and 29. And to discuss with staff and legal counsel specific legal matters related to the closed audit and risk management investigation in the divisions outside audit under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Online voting is open. We'll have to get you logged in. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote? I'll cast it for you. She votes yes.
The vote is six yes, two absent Deutsch and Williams. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will enter into closed session. We will return at 7 o'clock. We are on item 6.01, which is copy of discussion with staff and legal counsel regarding closed audit and risk management investigations and related issues affecting the divisions outside audit. A motion is in order.
601.
Six, ah, yes, 601, Ms. Jessie.
601, thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board provide a limited waiver of any privileges attached to those materials which its external audit has requested.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? Voting is open.
The vote is six yes, one absent Williams, one abstention Deutsch. Motion passed.
And on to item 7.01, which is approval of the closed session consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda is recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Voting is open.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
And finally, closed session certification. A motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Codes 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting on December 12, 2017, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only one, only one, only, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed session meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
Second.
Thank you. Just want to clarify, for the sake of the motion, that Ms. Jessie said December 12, but the motion is written properly on everyone's screen. It's actually December 13. She just said, she said the wrong date, but it's actually, it's actually proper on the screen, just for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Voting is open.
Motion passed.
We will have a very, very, five-second pause before we begin the meeting. I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order for Wednesday, December 13, 2017. Ms. Jessie, sorry, couldn't resist. We will start with the invocation, which will be a moment of silence at the request of Mr. Giltrunham of the Brentsville District. Thank you. And we have a few students in the audience. I see a few, I see one little one looking right at me. A few students right here up front that want to come up and, or stand up and lead us in the pledge, and we'll join you. Just come up right here to the front. A few of you, I see, you're looking at me. That means you. If you're looking at me, I'm talking to you. Absolutely. Come on, right there, it's perfect, sir. Young man, come on up. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, you made it on TV. Good job. I think we did this last year, if I'm not mistaken. We had a few, we had a few groups come in in our, in our last meeting before the, before the winter break. This was at my request. I don't do a whole lot of these, but, but I'm very happy to be able to do this one. So we're going to have a special presentation, and I'd like to, I'd like to announce, and they can come into the room if they can hear me, the Glenn Kirk Singing Knights from Glenn Kirk Elementary School in Gainesville.
Composer Jim Papoulis is known all over the world for his work of uplifting children in desperate conditions through songwriting and performing music. Jim's music was featured at the Beijing Olympics and the Pope's visit to the United States. His music can be heard as you exit the 9/11 museum in New York City. The song "Oh Yeah" was written by Jim and the children of Mexico City. The words remind the world that children are calling out for our help. Are you listening? If everyone started off the day singing, just think how happy they would be. There's nothing like music to uplift the soul. Music washes away from the soul, the dust of everyday life. Music can change the world because it can change people. Words make you think, but music makes you feel. These are some of the reasons why we sing.
Full disclosure, this is my daughter, so I just want to make sure.[1163.49][1163.49](audience cheering) It says, Chairman Sawyers, thank you for believing in us and for inviting us to sing at the school board. Respectfully, the Singing Knights of Glenn Kirk Elementary School, and they've all signed it. I'll be very brief. As you stand there, I promise, I won't make you stand there too long. I just want to say thank you. You know, we, we don't get to do a lot, a whole lot, and we deal with the business of the school board, and I love when Ms. Williams isn't here today. She normally is the big advocate for the music and the drum lines and, and everything else. But since I'm a little more involved in this one personally, but I understand what goes into this across the school district and our almost 100 schools, obviously Ms. Miranda and Ms. Kilgore, you guys are doing a wonderful job at Glenn Kirk in your first year there, and I commend you for the work you've done as a, not only the school board chairman, but as a parent in your school. I'm very appreciative of the work that goes in to these children, so thank you.[1255.11][1255.11](applause) But to Ms. Reagan, and Ms., for everyone who doesn't know, Ms. Reagan here, please, a round of applause for her.[1265.83][1265.83](applause) We have known each other for a few years now on the singing side of things, including, including in Youth Orchestra at Prince William on this end of the county, and dealing that, doing that at Garfield High School with our kids, and you're involved in that. And the commitment that you show, not just to my child, of course, one of, one of many in a school system, but, but to all the children in the school system, your own time, your own effort, your own energy. My mornings are too early because my daughter has to go, go practice to sing, so I imagine yours are even earlier. And so I just, I can't stress enough how, how wonderful and how appreciated you are in, in the Glenn Kirk family, and how your effort to help our children have these types of experiences is, is well received, and we, we owe you a debt of gratitude. So thank you very much.[1319.04][1319.04](applause) Thank you very much. Thank you. You're wonderful. You guys are going to turn around. I apologize, I forgot about the picture. You guys are going to turn around and come back towards the dais here a little bit, if you can, or if you stand right there, is that better, just to stand right there? Squad down. And board members, we can stand, please, and we'll be in the picture, they told us, if we just stand right here. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11.02. I would love to introduce, if they're not in the room, is that correct, right now? I'd love to ask that the, the Woodbridge High School varsity football team, please, please stand to be recognized. There they are.[1481.72][1481.72](audience cheering) You can, you, you can remain standing, and I will, I will turn it over to your majestuoso representative, Ms. Lily Jessie, of the, of the Okaforan District.
Ladies and gentlemen, the champs are here.[1505.38][1505.38](laughter) So, would you please come forward? This is the regional champions for the state of Virginia, Woodbridge High School Varsity Football Team.[1523.41][1523.41](applause) Yes. You want to turn and let the audience see?
(inaudible)
Okay. This is the regional champions, and the coach is Mr. Gary Wertham, who was the Redskins' Coach of the Month, and I'm going to let him speak first and share the trophy.
Sure, sure, sure. I just want to say, on behalf of Prince William County Schools, Woodbridge Child School, Principal Heather Abney, Activities Director, Mr. Washington, and the support that Ms. Jessie gives us is just tremendous. This was a great season for us, going 12-2, played a long season, but the support in regards to the county going to the state run was just, just wonderful. On behalf of this team, we have a gift for Ms. Jessie. This is an official game ball with our Viking logo on it, and we present this to her, signed by all our coaching staff and our entire team. We'd like to, for her to have this in our token of appreciation.[1658.19][1658.19](applause)
Photos, please. I don't know, I shouldn't throw the ball. Just, just, just hold the ball. Don't try to, to throw the ball. Okay, thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to personally, we medal the students in the atrium, and I would like to present this medal to Coach Wertham.[1696.15][1696.15](applause) And I just wanted to say that, where is Ms., where is our principal, where is Ms. Abney? Ms. Abney, please come forward. The Athletic Director. What happened here? Does it still work? First of all, I'm not a high school football person, and Mr. Washington invited me, and I came, and I was just stunned at not just the ability and skills of these students, because you guys are tremendous, but the coaching staff. And Ms. Abney, you do not know this, but you are one of the reasons that we have a student representative on the board. When you became principal of Woodbridge High School, I'm sure you remember, that you had a little incident, and there were things happening in the bathroom, and you were on television, you just got here, and you handled it in such a professional manner. But one of the things that really hit me that night was one of the parents came up to the mic, and she said, "I asked my..." to the mic and she said, "I asked my son, 'What should I say tonight?'" He said, "You should tell them that they should have invited us. They should have invited the students because we know what's happening in the building." And I remember you went back and you met with your student groups and that was the night, I know for Lori Williams, she said the night she decided she wanted to co-sponsor a student representative on the board, but she and I both co-sponsored it. But that was the night that it enlightened me that students should be in this boardroom. And so because of you, we have a student representative on the board. Every time I go to Woodbridge High School, a student meets me at my car. It's usually an ROTC student and she has involved so many students in so many things. And then I had the opportunity to be on the field when you guys won and it was just wonderful. And then I was on the field when the loss and you didn't go to the finals. And for, to Mr. Wertham and your coaching staff, these kids are physically gifted. These are the gifted kids, they're physically gifted, and I wanted them to know that before they went home for Christmas. And you are a gifted coach and your coaching staff. I did not expect to hear the poem "Invictus" being told, set to these students when I sat in that little huddle and how you talked to them about how this is not the end and that there are things more important. And I don't know if you recall, but you introduced every student that had received a scholarship. Yes, you did. And you talked to them about who they are and what they can be. And you guys are not only physically gifted, you are intellectually gifted because I've seen the playbook and I do not understand anything. And they would yell at them and tell them and they would say yes, and I thought, "I don't know what they said." And also, Mr. Ross, where's Mr. Ross? This man is the ambassador for Woodbridge High School. He is at everything, the 50th anniversary, everything. So I just want to thank you for supporting these kids and you guys, he said to you, "Go home, hold your heads up high because you are the champions." Thank you.
We have two commits that are going to sign next Wednesday. Deshaun Jerkins is going to sign with the University of Vanderbilt and Mr. Henry Shabuz is going to sign with Liberty University. We're going to let Deshaun share, he's got some words he'd like to say to the school board, please.
Hey, my name is Deshaun Jerkins. I've been going to, I've been under Prince William County Schools all my life, since I've been in school from elementary to high school down there. I've been to Ms. Jessi with my principal, elementary school. I've been to Elizabeth Warren. I have a brick and everything. Yeah, I have a brick. For getting all ages from third grade to fifth grade. Prince William County's been amazing to me and I'm glad you guys gave me the opportunities for them to give me opportunities to pursue my careers and accomplish something in life and I'm very thankful for you guys and my team is thankful for you guys.
Coach, sorry, Coach, if you don't, did you have something to say, Ms. Jessi? Okay. I'll be very brief, but Coach, you know, I'm going to turn on my coach switch really fast. I was a college baseball coach for 15 years, so I ran the circuit and did all the recruiting and all that kind of stuff. And I can tell you, by the time I left college coaching, you know, the players that I first coached were in there for 15 years later and they were now in their mid-30s with children and everything else. And I can tell you that none of them ever came back and came back to alumni weekends or came back to these events and thanked me for teaching them how to command a down-and-away fastball or how to throw a slider to the outer third or how to pitch up and in if a guy crowds the plate. Or they're not going to come back to you because you taught them how to pick up a blitz or you taught them how to miss a block or miss a tackle, excuse me. They're going to come back because you cared about them. They're going to remember you because you cared about them as individuals. I know not every one of you got all the playing time that you ever wanted in your life, trust me, I didn't either, right? But those are decisions coaches have to make, but they're going to come back and remember you because you cared about them as human beings, you cared about them as individuals and they're going to remember you, not just the season, but they're going to remember you for a long time because of that. So congratulations on a great year. And to the players, I'm going to say one thing and I'm going to make it real, real brief and I promise, Principal Abney did not put me up to this. You can have all the athletic talent in the world, all of it, and you won't play college athletics if you don't have the grades. Full stop. There's no halfway point, there's no kind of sorta, it's a full stop. At college baseball, we, college coaches have an expression all the time, "I can find somebody with your talent that has better grades if you don't have them," right? You have to have the grades, they're not optional. You can be okay athletically and if you have good grades, you'll play college sports, right? And you'll get a degree and it's a wonderful thing to do. If you don't have the academics, it's not an option. You have to have the academics and I cannot stress that enough. So don't think it's something that you just have to get through, it's something that you must have, no different than a helmet to step onto the field. You have to have that. So don't lose sight of both sides of being a student athlete, okay? Congratulations on a wonderful year. Thank you. We are on to the, let's see, items 12.01, Approval of the Public Meeting Agenda. We have, it's an action item. Is there a motion for the public meeting agenda, Ms. Jessi?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ralston?
I second.
Thank you, discussion? Voting is open?
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams, motion passed.
And on to adoption of the consent agenda. Motion? Ms. Jessi?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessi?
I move that the Prince William County School approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Ms. Jessi?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just address the items, I'm sorry, I need to pull this down. The contract awards for 1304, 1307, and 1308, that I support the approval and it's in my district. And I want to thank Mr. Klein and his staff for meeting with the parents and citizens of Lake Ridge, I think we met with them more than once, to assure them that, one, any changes or difference, any changes in terms of structural kinds of changes, major ones have been made, but that he would listen to them concerning their playground concerns and things of that nature. He did a thorough job of explaining the pros and cons of the situation. Mr. Klein and I have worked together for the last four years. We have looked for land on that eastern corridor. We are working with the Board of Supervisors currently to ensure that we have the land needed to build a new school. The superintendent, Mr. Klein and I and many of these board members would love to have the land to build a school and we are continuing to work on that end. But at this, the situation in the Lake Ridge area that's currently is that we needed an addition. This addition will fit the needs of those students and also allow us to bring in three or four, 300, I think 300 students from other schools that are overcrowded. In 2016, I met with, I went to every school in that Lake Ridge, Ocoquan District. I met with every principal and I invited the PTA president and the parent advisory and I asked one open-ended question and it was, "What is your greatest concern?" And they told me their greatest concern was overcrowding, not having space, and children in trailers. We are trying to address that need down the road. We still will have overcrowding in that corridor and some hard decisions are going to have to be made. There are going to be boundary issues and we're going to have to make those difficult decisions. And as I told the parents and citizens of Woodbridge, when we were doing the Woodbridge Boundary, Lake Ridge Medal and Woodbridge Boundary, someone is not going to be happy. It's one of those situations where we have to make the best decisions for our students. And I want to thank all the people, the parents in Lake Ridge and the parents in Antietam, I think they talked to Mr. Klein also. I just want to thank you for bringing to our attention your concerns and I just want to thank the school system and the Board of Supervisors for continuing to work with us, but I support this agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Jessi. Anyone else? Okay. Online voting is open.
Vote is seven yes, one absent Williams, motion passed.
All right, we're moving right along to student representative matters. Ms. Arnold, the floor is yours.
So firstly, I would like to thank the Glencore Knights for their performance tonight. I know they've already headed home, but as a choir student myself, I know how much fun it is to share your talents with the world and I'm very, very appreciative of the fact that they took time out of their night to come sing for us. The piece "This Is Why They Sing" is a song that I actually sang in middle school and I felt myself tearing up a little bit hearing it again, so that performance was very greatly appreciated and I would like to thank them for doing that. I would also like to congratulate Woodbridge. Every student in Prince William County knows how hard they've worked for this. It's a discussion among schools, even Hilton, as we walked out of that game having lost, talked about how hard the Woodbridge team worked on and off the fields and it definitely paid off, so I'd like to congratulate them for that. Moving on, I would like to discuss some ideas for reaching out for the public. This past week, I've spent some time in the Kelly Leadership Center talking to a couple of different people from several different departments about the boundaries of this new position, which is very much exploratory at this point, and the best way to go about the task of representing the diverse students in this county. I would like to formally introduce the idea of student town hall meetings as a way for students to communicate with the student representative about things they have to say about different topics so that the student representative can accurately represent their voice from the dais. I can't represent student ideas until I've heard student ideas and I think that town hall meetings would be the best way to do so. My vision for these meetings is that they would be held at a central location in each of the seven magisterial districts in Prince William County with every board member having an open invitation to all meetings. It is very important that these meetings be in several different locations in the county to provide the highest probability that all students will have a chance to attend a meeting as the proximity of event is often a deciding factor in whether or not a student will attend. These meetings will be open to all students from all around the county and while parents will be more than welcome to attend, those allowed to speak at the town hall would be limited to students of any ages attending a Prince William County public school. This is to ensure that we're reaching, completing the goal of making sure that we're hearing from students as it is the opportunity for a student representative to hear from their constituents. My current idea for the meetings is that they would begin with a discussion of preset agenda items that are relevant to what the school board is currently discussing. Issues would be introduced as well as the actions that the school board is considering and the floor would be open to all those who signed up in advance or at the door to offer their opinion on the issue. After all agenda items have been discussed, remaining time would be spent in an open forum with students having signed up to have three minutes to discuss an issue they deem relevant to board matters. I would like for this open floor time to be limited to a certain time constraint to be understanding of students' needs to return home and study and have valuable family bonding time, but the time limit has yet to be set. The exact date and times of these meetings have yet to be decided as I first wanted to present the ideas to the board and to the public and open it up for feedback. But the time would most ideally be after sports and after-school activities have been released that the largest possible numbers of students could attend. Separate town hall style meetings would absolutely be a possibility for schools dealing with hyper-specific issues, either by request of the student representative or by the request of the school's student body and administration. I really do feel as if town hall meetings is going to be the most effective way for the student representative to open themselves up to hearing the ideas of all students, along with any and all email correspondence students are willing to engage in. I would love to get feedback on this issue before I proceed and set it into motion and welcome any other ideas in addition to this one. I also want to remind students that they don't need to wait for town hall meetings to begin before they can start reaching out to me. I can be reached at arnoldka18@pwcs.edu.org. Again, that is Arnold, A-R-N-O-L-D, K-A-18@pwcs.edu.org. Thank you all so much for your time this evening and I look forward to doing more with the board to amplify the voices of students going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Now I'll open the floor to either Mahin or Zaki. If you would like, if you had some remarks, you can come to the podium here. You can both come up. These are the alternate student reps.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Zaki Panchiri. I am the second alternate to the student representative position. I extend my sincerest appreciation to the panel of teachers who appointed me and to the incumbent school board which provides me this opportunity. As Kate Arnold has strongly conveyed at these past two meetings, students are deeply concerned and enthused about their government. Kate's, Mahin's, and my principal ambition is to consider and eventually to suggest new ideas from students' perspectives. Most of the discourse conducted here involves concrete policy, but I wish to take this occasion to describe some basic principles for the purpose of reminding us why both students like us and parents and educators like you all and members of this audience are passionate about their education system. In an essay called "Universal Education," the philosopher and mathematician Bertrand Russell writes, "The imparting of knowledge in education has always had two objects, on the one hand to give skill and on the other to give a vaguer thing which we may call wisdom." Although Russell does not fully explain this latter element, he gives an instance of it. One of the great things that education can and "One of the great things that education can and should give is the power of seeing the general in the particular, the power of feeling that this, although it is happening to me, is very like what happens to others, what has happened through many ages and may continue to happen. This level of empathy and emotional intelligence, in addition to the intellectual aspect of education, is what my fellow students and I wish to cultivate both in ourselves and in the rest of our community. In every discussion that I have with my fellow students and with members of the school board, these principles in favor of creativity and altruism will persist in my mind and in my words. At the meeting previous to this one, for example, the board discussed inquiry-based learning, as evidenced by Mr. Wilk's remarks, and assistance in language acquisition, as evidenced by Ms. Rawson's remarks, which I think are nearly undisputed as concepts in our modern, open society, and completely in accord with the ideal of instilling both skill and wisdom. I look forward to learning from the members of the board and expect to achieve great personal growth by listening to their debates and to the input of the public, especially the students' views. Thank you."
Ms. Chairman and Board, I just want to take this opportunity to extend my gratitude. I'm gratitude not only for this opportunity and privilege, it is not just a privilege of the position itself, but it's the privilege of listening to our students and share their concerns and their remarks with the board. You know, one of the things when it comes to education is, it's not just pathway to a career, it's a pathway to life. And that's one of the proudest moments, you know, when I came here last week and the chairman talked about how we're making history. History isn't just those moments of the position last week. History is when every single one of our students graduate, when every single one of our students grow on in their career, and more importantly, when everyone of our students share their prosperity with their communities. That's why I'm proud to be here with my fellow representatives, Zaki and Ms. Arnold, and that's why when we were talking about earlier when it came to the town halls, we want to listen to these students, not just in our own communities, but across the county. Because the reason why we came here wasn't just to have this position, it was to share the thoughts and remarks of our students. And I thank with sincere gratitude and with sincere thanks for the opportunity, not just to extend the thoughts and remarks of our students, but true make a difference in our county. Thank you so much, and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we're moving right along to citizens' time. We had about seven speakers total sign up ahead of time. Two signed up at the door, one, Zaki, was you. I assume you don't want to speak again, is that correct? So we'll go ahead and cross you off there. So we should have about eight speakers. I'm going to go ahead and call everybody, and you're welcome to come up and use the reserved seating here in the front of the room. The order, as I call everyone, the order is going to be Christopher Dixon, Rachel Freeman, then joint speakers Kyle Harris and Kristin Davis, then Jennifer Gilly, Joseph Gilly, Carter Gilly, Judith Morris, and then Riley O'Casey will be our speakers. Those will be our eight speakers. I'll remind everybody that we'll have, you'll have three minutes to speak and address the board. I will run the timer here from the computer, and usually remember to hit the button. The three minutes will run over my right shoulder here, and you'll be able to see how much time you have remaining. At 30 seconds, it turns yellow, and you'll ask to start to, start to wrap it up, and at zero seconds, it turns red, and that means your time is completed. We obviously ask that everybody use proper decorum at all times. If you don't use proper decorum at all times, then I will kindly ask you to step aside. If it's only happened once so far in two years. So I don't know why Riley's staring at me when I say proper decorum, so, but I trust you, I trust you. But we'll get going here, and I believe our first speaker is Mr. Christopher Dixon. Mr. Dixon.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, school board members, and Dr. Waltz. My name is Christopher Dixon, and my address is on file with the clerk. I'm the elementary strings teacher at Mary F. Williams, Covington Harper, and Triangle Elementary Schools, and I would like to speak to you this evening about the elementary strings program's past, present, and future. I am humbled to be speaking about this program, as I was once a student in the fifth grade strings program in PWCS, and now I'm a teacher in that same program. Recently, one of our elementary strings teachers ran across the original grant application that began our stringed instrument instruction program in PWCS in 1967. We were struck by the significance of the date, as this year marks the 50th anniversary of the strings program. Flash forward 50 years later, and our orchestra program has become an integral part of every school in the division. We have grown from five itinerant teachers in 1967 to 23 itinerant teachers in 2017, and we currently have 3,860 students in the elementary strings program. Ten elementary schools have also chosen to expand the program to fourth grade as well. In celebration of our 50 years of our orchestra program in Prince William County, we will be having a celebratory concert on Friday, May 4th, at 7:30 PM at Brentsville High School. We would like to extend the invitation to the board to attend this special event. Many current and former orchestra teachers and students will be in attendance, and we will have artifacts, photos, and articles from the history of the program on display. We also had special polo shirts made up for this event. The logo on the shirt that I am wearing was designed by Christian Santiago, a senior at Forest Park High School, to commemorate this event. One of the best things about our elementary strings program, in my opinion, is that it teaches our students to become creative thinkers and artists. When a child picks up an instrument, he or she is able to transcend from the purely mechanical task of using the correct techniques to make a sound, to find their inner voice, to connect to the music. Our goal is not to make every child into a professional musician, but to help develop each, each child's character through the study of music. Finally, I would like to speak to the future of the program. We are so fortunate to have this wonderful program in every elementary school in the county. For the past 50 years, strings classes in this county have been held on stages and cafeterias, and yes, sometimes in the hallway. Students who learn in these environments are often distracted by lunchroom noise, and classes are often moved or canceled whenever there are events in the cafeteria. In 2011, the county started building schools with designated classrooms for strings. I would like to thank the school board and facility services for designing schools with these designated rooms, which gives students a safe, consistent, distraction-free environment in which to learn. This past year, I was honored to be appointed as one of Mr. Wilk's representatives on the Infrastructure Task Force. One of the ideas discussed at the task force meetings was adding additional instructional space at older elementary schools, and strings rooms are one of the identified deficiencies where older schools differ from newer schools. I hope that the board will consider the 50-year history of the elementary strings program when looking at the upcoming CIP. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Our next speaker is Rachel Freeman. Rachel?
My name is Rachel Freeman, and my address is on record. I'm here tonight in regards to the current state of Woodbridge Senior High School. I'm the mother of six children and have been living in Prince William County since 1999. I have children at Old Bridge Elementary, Lake Ridge Middle, and Woodbridge Senior High School. My oldest child graduated from Woodbridge last spring. I currently have a junior and a freshman at Woodbridge. All three of my children played or currently playing on multiple sports teams and are involved with various clubs. I'm very happy with the administration and the majority of the teachers. Woodbridge has a great community atmosphere with wonderful students and parents. This is why I'm here tonight. We are watching what is going on within our county. We see the inequity that is happening between the east and west ends of our county. We believe that each high school, new or old, should have the same access to world-class facilities and fields, so that all children, regardless of their race and where they go to school, have equitable opportunities to succeed and achieve. What do I tell my children when they go play games at various high schools throughout the county and wonder why there's such a discrepancy in facilities? I don't want to move to Colgan, Patriot, Battlefield, or the next new high school on the list to be built. My children used to eat school lunches but don't anymore because they can't get through the lines quick enough during their allotted time for lunch. The student population has exceeded the intended capacity of the food service facilities. Yet, they see on social media other students sitting outside on a nice day, eating hot lunches, and listening to live music during their lunchtime at other schools. What are you, as our elected leader, showing our children? That only part of the county is deserving of such positive experiences? If my message has a familiar tone, it's because I sent each one of you a similar email weeks ago, but received only a single response, and that one response insinuated that the race, that race and the school demographics may have a direct influence on the current inequities. Quote, "Mrs. Freeman, the disparity in quality of infrastructure in our school system is disgusting. I would be happy to sit with you and any member of your community you wish. It can be just few or hundreds. The administration and previous school boards have ignored the eastern end of the county, mostly, in my opinion, due to its higher density of Black and Hispanic families," end quote. I'd like to believe that this isn't true. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, we have joint speakers next. They are Kyle Harris and Kristin Davis.
Good evening, Dr. Waltz, Mr. Sawyers, and the rest of the school board. My name is Kristin Davis, and my classmates and I are here to represent Brentsville District High School's turf grass management program. In the holiday spirit, my classmates and I have created these reeds as we present them to you. While my classmates are handing out the reeds, I will continue to talk about our program. We come here tonight to discuss our new and revamped program. With the vision for Mrs. Mites, our principal, with the hope of expanding the program, there has been a shift in focus from horticulture to turf and landscape management. Under the care of Mr. Miller, our new teacher, there have been drastic changes in the program. The biggest change that I have noticed as a student is that everything has shifted to performance-based learning. We have started taking on bigger projects throughout the school year, such as painting our own football field, maintaining the landscape at Brentsville District High School, as well as in Oaksville School, and we have also created gardens around the schools, such as Memorial Garden dedicated to Mrs. Rosenberg, who was a very important character in the Brentsville community who had passed away over the summer. Now, the program has not strayed too far from its roots, as we are still, we are still to have our annual plant sale in the spring, and we have also had a mom's sale in the fall. Now, with all of this, we do have a slightly dysfunctional greenhouse that is unable of retaining heat during the winter, and actually does kill some of our plant cell. But we are able to make do with what we have to still raise revenue for our program. Another aspect of our new performance-based learning has been there, there has been an increase of performance-based assessment. Mr. Miller has made sure to promote teamwork and camaraderie, just like is in the workplace. He is always talking about by the end of the course, he wants students to have all the opportunity to take their own path into the career field of the turf and landscape industries. A highlight of our first year was our field trip to Virginia Tech to visit with the professors of the turf grass management and horticulture programs. We went down and talked to professors about the opportunity of the two-year and four-year degrees. We also got to meet with some of Mr. Miller's former coworkers at Virginia Tech Stadium's ground crew. We learned about the facilities and everything that they are in charge of. There were major renovations going on at the time of the field trip, so we were able to see that not only is the industry changing, but how to adapt to the industry changes. This field trip reflects the overall idea of our program, this being allowing students to fund, to find a job or college that would best suit them for the start of their career. We have already begun this process by getting students internships in sports, in sports turf, golf course maintenance, and landscape internships over the summer. We currently have two Brentsville graduates in the Virginia Tech turf grass program and one Brentsville graduate on the Virginia Tech grounds crew. With Mr. Miller's past experience with the New York Mets, the Pittsburgh Pirates, and Steelers, he has many connections in the turf grass industry that will help get everyone started in the industry. We would like to wrap things up, and we want to give a big thank you to Mr. Doug Wright, our CTE supervisor, who has been our number one sponsor. And we also want to thank you, school board members, for supporting our school and our program. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Gilly. Ms. Gilly?
My helper is here, too. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Gilly. My address is on file. I know you all know me. I have the green shirt on, support the team. One of my sons remained back to talk with me. We are trying to get Woodbridge High School on the capital improvement budget. I know your budget, you will be talking about it in January, and you will be deciding where your money is, where the money is going. Woodbridge High School needs the money. Obviously, they're not going to get all the money. Woodbridge High School needs money. They continue to do good in the standard of facilities that they have and the programs that they have. They continue to excel. We have students that are going very far, and we're very proud of them, but they could go even further. I would really hope that the fact that we're on one side of the county and our skin color is a little bit darker, that that has nothing to do with why our programs in our high school has not been fixed substantially as other schools have been in the past. I sent out lots of emails asking people to come and help support and talk tonight, and I did receive an email from one parent saying, "Well, it's really not fair that the football team is getting all of this stuff. Why should the football team get recognition?" And I said, "Well, it's not the football team that we're fighting for, we're fighting for the entire school. There shouldn't be a subgroup of people. It shouldn't be just the east side, it shouldn't be just the west side, it shouldn't just be Woodbridge High School. We should be fighting for all the students in Prince William County to have an equal education, and that's all we're asking for." So please remember that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Gilly. Joseph? No, Joseph? And Carter? Carter Gilly?
Good evening. My name is Carter Gilly. I'm a sophomore at Woodbridge Senior High School. I play football and wrestle for Woodbridge. Three and seven, that was our record in football last year. Since last November, we got to work and improved a lot. Thirteen and two was our record this year, a testament to our work ethic. We currently, we currently have over 10 players with D1 scholarships to receive an education at the next level, and more who will soon be getting this chance. This year, we were regional champs, won an American rivalry game, and played in the state semifinal game. We accomplished these things through grinding in the offseason and adjusting to adversity throughout the season. For multiple weeks, we weren't even able to practice on our own field, because as soon as we got a little rain, our fields turned to mud and didn't dry out for a number of weeks. Also, our weight room isn't nearly as equipped as certain other schools in this area. With as many student athletes that we have fighting to make a better, a better life for them after graduation, I believe that we deserve a couple of adjustments to our school. Woodbridge has the talent, the drive, and the grace to succeed. We just need a school board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker to sign up ahead of time was Judith Morris.
Sorry.
Sorry. I tricked you a little bit with my wording, I apologize. Ms. Morris?
Hello. Good evening. I'll wait for you to respond.
No, you go ahead. I'm always behind, don't worry about it.
Good evening. My name is Judith Morris, and my address is on file with the clerk. I am here, although I'm not wearing green, to support Woodbridge High School. I want to start off by telling you that I love Woodbridge High School. I have two students, two children who graduated from Woodbridge High School, and one who is going to attend next year. Having said that, I appreciate the work and the effort that the teachers put into the students at the school. I appreciate the effort of the parents. I know you've been hearing from many of them who've come up and are asking for Woodbridge to be improved. When we've met with school officials and we've talked with different board members, we're told that Woodbridge is, there are other schools that are older, or as old as Woodbridge. And I know when you build a new school, you put all the new glitches and shiny things in the new school, and with what's left over, we try and put it into the other schools. Oftentimes, we hear that Woodbridge is as old as Stonewall Jackson or as old as Garfield. When I look at the school data for Garfield, Stonewall Jackson, I see that we have a higher socioeconomic disadvantage percentage, we have a higher minority percentage than I see the schools such as Battlefield, Patriot, and Colgan. Now, I saw your faces when our, the ladies that spoke earlier and said, "Oh, people have said that it's maybe because, you know, the eastern part of the county is a little bit darker, or we're a little bit poorer." And everybody's like, "We can't believe it." But when I look at the numbers, I'm going, "What's going on here?" What we're asking you is to give our students a chance. We're looking for equity in resources. The way it's being done isn't working. We need to give our students everything they need to serve for, to succeed. I'm not just talking about my own, I'm talking about all of them. Equity to all students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, signing up at the door, is Ms. Riley O'Casey. Ms. O'Casey?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members, Dr. Waltz. My name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. I come tonight to express concerns over what has become a domino effect. There are continuing issues with transportation. This negatively impacts the division as a whole. The first concern is that there are simply not enough drivers to manage the daily routes. As a result, many drivers must run double routes, causing late arrivals to many schools. Because of this, our bus drivers are struggling to keep up. They don't frequently have time to take care of personal needs. In fact, many are not permitted to enter the buildings to use the restrooms. I implore the division to remedy this now, guaranteeing that all bus drivers can use the restrooms in all schools. The second concern involves the altering of routes on a The second concern involves the altering of routes on a consistent basis. On far too many occasions, a bus driver is informed of a change in their route that very day. The challenges of driving a bus with forty to fifty children has just increased, causing buses to arrive at schools far later than expected. When buses arrive late to schools, dismissal for students has been delayed fifteen, even twenty minutes. There is no doubt that our students must remain in a safe environment. However, this requires teachers to stay past their contact, contract time, sometimes twenty to twenty-five minutes. This causes problems for those who have daycare needs, second jobs, or even those teachers that stay after to grade papers, plan lessons, or work with students. While we must do all we can to recruit bus drivers, we must also respect the drivers we have now. These are the folks who love the students and are the first to greet them in the morning and the last to say goodbye at the end of the day. We must also think of those teachers who are losing precious time. The time is adding up, and the frustrations are mounting. This is impacting far too many division employees, and the dominos continue to fall. Can we count on you to see this addressed? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Casey. We are moving on to item 16.01, which is the history and social science textbook adoption. I don't believe there's any additional presentations. Is that correct, Ms. Goss? So then we have a motion for the history and social science textbook, textbook adoption. I'll go ahead and, Mr. Deutsch, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the textbooks recommended by the History and Social Science Textbook Adoption Committee.
Thank you, and I'll go ahead and second it. Excuse me, Mr. Deutsch, I didn't see your mic on. I do apologize. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Okay. Sorry. I was losing my voice. The textbook is a very emotional thing for me, Ms. Jesse, apparently. Now, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, online voting is open.
Williams, motion passed.
And on to item 17.01, Infrastructure Task Force Elementary School Recommendations. And I see you already coming, Mr. Klein. Mr. Klein, on the way to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Waltz. Our item before you this evening is a report from the Infrastructure Task Force, specifically dealing with elementary school recommendations. The school board created the Infrastructure Task Force on June 15, 2016, which was intended to provide an assessment of the state of our school-based infrastructure, and focusing primarily on the differences between our older and newer schools, and to provide a recommended list of improvements to bring our older schools up to par with newer facilities. Sounds kind of familiar. Mr. Don Richardson, or Chairman of the Infrastructure Task Force, will be providing a presentation regarding the task force recommendations relative to elementary improvements. We've spent the past year working on the elementary side, and with, beginning at our last meeting this, this coming year, we are working on looking at a similar review and set of recommendations that will involve middle and high school programs. Mr. Richardson? And actually, if we have other members of the task force, if you'd like to come down front so that we can be recognized?
This is here. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. See if I can make this work. Very good. Oh, good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the board, Dr. Waltz, and welcome, Ms. Arnold. I am Don Richardson, and I'm the Chairman of the Infrastructure Task Force. We have spent a little over the past year talking about primarily the elementary schools. We made the decision early on that we would focus on the elementary schools first, and then the second year work on middle schools and high schools, mostly because there's a disparity between the programs and the infrastructure needs, and so it just made sense to divide it up that way. Let me get this right here. As Mr. Klein said, this was our mission. I won't repeat it. He just, he basically went through all of this. But our focus, again, was the differences between the older and the newer schools, and we are looking primarily at recommendations that affect the CIP, not other sides of the Quick review, the stellar talent that you all appointed to our committee. They've all been very active and very involved. There's been a lot of discussion and questions. It's been a good process. Again, very quickly, this was our deliverable. We are going to review existing schools against what our facility standard is. Where is each school different from what the current elementary school standard is? We did prioritize and evaluate all of the differences, and we came up with a matrix of what it would cost, both across the board for a particular kind of deficiency, say lack of an activity room, and vertically what it would cost to fix all the deficiencies at each particular school. This spreadsheet will be posted on the Facility Services part of the website, and you, I'm sure you have it in your materials also. This will give you a better feeling for the detail behind what we're talking about tonight. We, we talked quite a bit about the differences and how we would prioritize all this. We are in agreement that there's two things that are important. Mainly, we want to focus on things that will improve the instructional experience, but we also recognize the safety and security considerations are important, very important to parents, but they also do impact the effectiveness of instruction. We looked at quite a bit of data over the year, and we boiled it down. We are obviously not going to recommend that you do everything to fix everything that we found. There were a lot of topics that simply won't be, won't be able to be remediated right away. Among the challenges we faced is that there's many different elementary school prototypes, and trying to adopt a cookie cutter approach to adding space would be difficult. Different sites have different challenges. Things that would work at one site might not work at another site, and it would be better to keep some flexibility in that regard. The other thing is that trying to do standalone projects is more expensive. You're better off trying to bundle these fixes with already planned renovations and additions as part of your CIP, because there's significant cost savings to doing that. It's also easier for staff to manage as part of an overall process. You're going to have to identify some additional funding in the CIP. Now, obviously, the task force and many people would prefer to address all the identified needs all at once, but limiting you is that it's just too many projects for staff to manage effectively all at one time, and also likely among the contractor community, there's not going to be enough capacity to do that. So the conclusion is that we should address all these changes over the course of the existing ten-year CIP. We believe we can identify some recommendations that can be added to the current CIP that once completed will allow all of the older schools to receive some help toward parity. Very briefly, I want to mention environmental issues. We did spend a fair amount of time talking about environmental issues. They're very important, not only to our members, but to a lot of people. The difficulty is that, number one, environmental issues are not really an older school versus a newer school issue, and the other issue is that they're not really dealt with as part of the CIP. When staff is made aware of issues, they move and they deal with them right away. There are a variety of environmental issues that are considered. Lead management, testing drinking water, paint and tile glazing, looking for asbestos that needs abatement, and other various environmental issues, as you can see. Staff has an ongoing mandate to deal with these as they happen, so while we did talk about it, it's really out of scope for what we're recommending. It is also important to recognize that not all environmental issues are something that the school division can handle on its own. We have to coordinate on a regular basis with other organizations and utilities, such as the County Service Authority, to ensure that the highest quality of service to the schools continues, and of course, that, very important that that relationship between our staff and other organizations continue going forward. Specific recommendations, there are three. We prioritized into several groups, and the first one was security and safety-related improvements. Now, the good news here is that the Safe Schools Advisory Council some time ago had identified physical improvements that needed to be made. Many of our schools have already received these improvements. Additionally, some of the schools are scheduled to get them in the existing CIP, and what we're recommending is that you assign some additional funds so that over the course of the current CIP, the remaining schools also get those improvements. This is a relatively small dollar amount total, so we're recommending that's one priority that you knock out right off the bat. We also suggest that you ask the Safe Schools Advisory Council to give you an update as to whether they've identified any additional physical infrastructure issues that need addressing, so that we can include that in the plan at a future date. The second, and the more expensive piece of this, is we decided that the most effective way to achieve better equity with the older schools is to provide them with additional instructional-related spaces. So we're, we're suggesting that, you know, many of the schools are in the CIP already to receive these kind of improvements, and all we're suggesting you do is that you accelerate the current CIP, so that over the course of the current ten-year CIP, every one of the older schools gets some additional instructional space to balance things out a little bit. And I'll get to that, I'll get to the cost of that in a little bit. We're recommending that flexibility be kept to allow staff to tailor the needs at each site, because there are site limitations. Site-based programs, also, there may be some preferences to do one thing or the other. One school might prefer to get an activity room, and other school might prefer to get a story room, and so we're suggesting that you keep some flexibility where that's concerned. The third category was technology improvements, going along with the technology improvement plan you already have in place. And I have some good news for you there. In the, by the end of FY18, the 10-gigabyte network bandwidth, bandwidth will be in place, what some of us would call a fat pipe. And then also, by the end of FY22, the TIP indicates that there will be a wireless access point in every classroom. I think we're about halfway there now. Right now, a lot of the schools have only one access point for every two classrooms, but once you get there, you will have equity in terms of the overall infrastructure among all the schools. Beyond that, you really can't go, because there's so many differences from each elementary school, based on site-based preferences, in terms of what kind of devices they put on their network and how they use them. It's very, very difficult to, to really address equity at that point, but we will at least give the baseline infrastructure some equity. It's already in the CIP for that timeframe, so you don't need to identify any additional money to do that. And when we talk about the instructional space, I'll reiterate that we're recommending that you, you keep some flexibility. You might, for example, want to put in a STEM room or a STEAM room rather than a science lab. Again, it's going to depend on your program preferences. We're going to provide as documentation the cost matrix that we put together. It's going to be on the website under Facility Services, and as I said earlier, it addresses each individual school's costs based on what their deficiencies are, and then across the board, what it would cost for each kind of deficiency division-wide. We also recognize there's some things we talked about that we have not been able to prioritize for you at this time, and just keep them in mind if you have the time and money to do it later. Some of these other things would be nice to tackle. Some of those things include additional ball fields, better parking lot lighting, divided cafeterias, and security apartments. Again, these were things that we all felt were worth talking about, but they didn't rise to the level of what we would consider our highest priority recommendation to you. Now, the money. Again, when you're looking at these numbers, keep in mind, this is current dollars, so as time goes forward, you'll have to adjust for inflation. Also, keep in mind that for the first item, the security-related improvements, that's just for the schools that are not already in the CIP to get the security improvements. It's not all the schools. As you see, it's a relatively small number, all things considered. Now, when you talk about the next group, the next four bullets, this is the, what it would cost to remedy the deficiency if we gave every school lacking a science lab, a science lab. Again, not including the ones that are already in the CIP to get a science lab, just the ones that are not in the CIP right now. Same thing for the activity rooms, the strings rooms, and the story rooms. It looks like a lot of money, but you're going to save a lot of money, because this is the worst-case scenario. This is if you did it as a standalone project, and you're not going to do it that way. You're going to do it as part of renovations and additions already planned, and when you bundle it all together, the contractor is more efficient and you save money. So this is, look at, look on these as worst-case numbers, and also look on these as numbers that are going to happen over a ten-year CIP. They're not happening all at once. We identified a couple of million dollars' worth of parking onsite improvements that could be made. You might want to consider that. And as I said, the, in terms of the current CIP, you've already got everything scheduled for the technology improvements, so there's no additional money needed there. Just remember, again, that this is going to be adjusted for inflation as you go forward. Just a reminder of what you already know, our CIP operates on a 20- to 25-year renewal cycle. Schools that were built in the 90s are now being renovated. There are a lot of projects that have already been completed, so they don't show up here, such as air conditioning the schools and air conditioning the kitchens. Over the last five years, we've renovated 14 schools, and we currently have over 600 million planned for renovations, renewals, and repairs at all school levels, not just elementary, over the next 10-year CIP. Path forward, we are going to dive right back into it in January and start talking about the element, elementary, the middle schools and the high schools. We recognize, as we heard tonight, that there's a lot of concern about the high schools and their facilities. It's going to be challenging, because the programs and the way the schools operate, and indeed, the facilities they have, are different from the elementary levels, and so it's going to be a different discussion for us, but hopefully, we will, we'll get there and come forward again next year with, about this time, with some recommendations for what you could do with the CIP to bring some of those older high schools forward toward equity as, as people are asking. We will come back to you, I imagine, next June with an interim report, let you know how we're doing, just like we did this June with the elementary schools, and then finish up this process in time for next year's CIP. And that's all I have, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much. Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's good to see you back before the school board. First off, I want to thank all the task force members for being a participant. I know one of my nominees, Ms. Claire, is sitting there, and I know this is a huge task that we've asked you all to do, and I certainly appreciate the work that you all have put into this. A couple of questions I have as far as when the, on the specific, talking to the spreadsheet that you had there, when we have those costs, I, I'm reading that as that's the cost involved in building an additional, say, if it's a strings room. That's the cost in building the strings room and doing whatever needs to be done internally as far as furnishing it, and any special structures or any special configurations that has to be?
My understanding is that would be whatever costs would normally go into the CIP. That would be included in there. And again, if there are items like that that are already planned, that are already in the CIP, they're not included in those total dollars. Mr. Klein?
If I could add one more component, keeping in mind that when we put the matrix together, that also defines a cost sort of, you need some mechanism for determining the cost, so that effectively looks at a cost sort of as a standalone unit.
Right.
So while we're looking and saying, "Okay, this is the cost to add a strings room at a school," that's really the cost if you were doing nothing else. In all reality, if we're in there doing a renewal or doing some other work, the component cost of doing that strings room would actually come down. The problem is, if you're doing the calculations, there's no real good way to balance those costs across what might or might not be happening at a school. So again, the true cost will be dependent upon what the timing is like for inflation, but also what's happening at that school, what other elements of the CIP you're implementing or constructing at the same time you're doing, in this case, say, strings room.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. The other question I have is?
That's why we're saying, we can't tell you precisely what it's going to cost, but it should be less than what we put up there. That's worst case.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. The other thing is, and I realize that the task force probably didn't, I don't know if you all talked about it, but it wasn't part of your mandate, but I would expect our staff to be looking at, we consider like in some of the areas from a I don't want to overtask these rooms, but like for, I'll use an example. A story room is typically, I'm saying they're very short and wide rooms and I would imagine a strings room would be a somewhat similar, but maybe slightly different configuration. If we look, or as our staff, are we going to be looking for opportunities where maybe we can leverage and do a and dual-use types of opportunities where we could out, where we could set up a room that could be used both as a story room and maybe soundproofing for strings rooms and address some of these things.
Well, without getting into the details, we did discuss quite a bit the need to make these spaces as flexible as possible so that they could have more than one use. The idea being, we want to give them additional instructional space, let them decide what's the best way to use it.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you. And the other question I have is just with regards to the middle school and the high school tasks that you've got before you next time. That I think is going to be much more, much more complex task. Are you planning on doing like middle schools first and then going to the high schools or doing them all at once? Or have you still working that out as a group or?
I think the original intent was we would handle them as a group, but as we get into it, we may change our minds and decide to split it out and do middle school separately. But my guess is, based on the way the elementary school discussion went, that we'll probably do them together. There's enough similarities between the two divisions, the two levels. You know, they both have sports programs to a certain extent. They have, it's a different class structure. We'll see how it goes. We're going to start talking in January and go from there.
Once again, thank you again for all the work that y'all are doing that. It's really needed. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Trennan. Ms. Jesse?
I guess my question, I know that each one of us had two representatives from our different areas. And are you talking to the people in the trenches? I mean, I'm becoming more and more aware, as I talk tonight about student representation and talking to students, the people on the ground. You made a list of things that, as a committee, you think. Did you get input from? Because at many of these schools, there are groups, like the one at Woodbridge High School. When you establish priorities, are you talking to some of those groups? Because if we don't talk to some of those groups in the formative stages, they come to the boardroom and call us out. So I'm just wondering, as representatives for Aquaquan, for example, are they talking to people in Aquaquan? I don't mean just Aquaquan and John, I'm just using that as an example.
I can't answer that question directly, but I do know that based on the participation of the various members, it's quite obvious that they're all very aware of what the conditions are in the schools in their districts because they had a lot of personal stories to tell and things that other people had said to them. These are people who are, you know, they're quite active in their school communities. So I am, I have to assume that they have gone out and talked to members of their public.
I guess what my concern is that are the people on that committee talking, representing their schools and their point of views, or are they, is there a mechanism for them to get input from people in their area? I'm not sure that somehow a mechanism should be put in place to somehow get some input from, other than the two people from the area. Because the cases that I've had in my areas, I think, I'm not sure that some of the, one of the persons on there was from that area. But I'm just saying that there should be a mechanism to get input from people who are on the ground because I'm not sure they would establish the same priority.
Well, one thing we could do, and it will be easier because we're dealing with fewer schools total at this level. One thing that we could do would be to have all of our members try to schedule mini-town halls at each of their high schools, for example. And not just talk about that high school, but, you know, invite the community in that area to come and talk about that high school and the other middle schools in the immediate vicinity. The difficulty is one of scheduling. It would be practically impossible to get the entire task force to each of these places in a timely fashion. So it would have to be, the burden would have to be on the members from each magisterial district to go and do that. But it's a good idea. Obviously, it's better to hear the input firsthand directly from people. We saw, we saw tonight how passionately people feel about Woodbridge High School. My children graduated from Stonewall Jackson, which is not one of the newer schools. So I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to all of that. But really, the question will be, you know, we have to spend a fair amount of time as a task force talking about these issues. And so I think it's going to be, can we find a way for the individual members to go out and meet with the public that allows them to bring back for their own district? Certainly a good idea.
Thank you. In many instances, if you have a meeting, sometimes a town hall and for the students on the board, you may have the town meeting and no one shows up to your town meeting, but your job is to have the town meeting. And to advertise it and get input. The other question, I guess, earlier you said that it is or is not aligned with the present CIP. But are we trying to do, when we look at the issue of equity, you really do have to do a little bit more for the schools that are, that have been since 1975 or whatever. And now the infrastructure, when you walk into the building and you look at this building, you think, whoa, how long has it been since this building? And then you leave that building, you go to another building and there's a disparity. And I think that has happened, but I think that we can fix it. But I don't think we're going to be able to fix it by equal equal. In fact, I was talking to Mr. Klein. I thought he was really going to laugh at me, but he didn't. I said to him, we're talking STEM, STEM, STEM. Everybody should have STEM. Everybody should have labs. So if we're going to wait five years for one school to get a lab, why don't you, can we buy mobile labs? Can we buy buses or something and equip them and let them go from school to school? So nobody waits because none of these kids should have to wait. There should be certain baseline things that students have and there shouldn't be when it comes up in the CIP. Because we know that STEM and this is the way of the future for our kids. And it's just moving so rapidly that it's the only thing that I can think of that's like, you know, they said, would you like another computer? And the computer is totally different. A year later, it's different. It's moving very rapidly and other countries really are moving ahead of us in science and technology. So I think the weight, there needs to be a weight factor for you to consider.
You raise a very good point in the fact that things do change, not just the technology, but instruction is changing. And what we think we need right now, five years from now, may be totally different. So again, we're stressing be flexible and put the resources into improving the instructional opportunities, but don't get too specific now because five years from now, you may want to do something different. But it's a very good point. Something else I should mention in terms of us getting direct input. We went and did a site visit this year for the elementary schools. We went to Kilby, old and new. It happened to be convenient that the old one was about to close, the new one right next door is about to open. We were able to compare new standard to old school very conveniently. I would imagine we would do at least one site visit at the high school and middle school levels as well as a task force to, again, get eyes on the problem firsthand rather than hearing about it secondhand. I know for me, visiting Kilby was very useful. It's way down at the east end of the county. It's, I'm from Gainesville, so I'm not as familiar with that area and it was very helpful to me to see it firsthand. So I imagine we will do at least one of those, maybe one high school, one of the middle schools, and then, you know, compare. But if we can kind of coordinate that with also having a town hall meeting where people know we're going to be there and can come speak to us, so much the better. That would be, that would be good.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. And then we've got Ms. Ralston and then Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern, I've been driving around similar to what you've been doing. And I've noticed that handicap parking and the accessibility between the parking and the actual door is quite a distance. We need to take a look at that and we need to also contact the necessary people if we don't know exactly how many parking spaces you need at the schools. Be they old or new, they're not all in compliance.
We did talk about parking, actually. It's not, it didn't rise to the level of our recommendations tonight. Primarily because there is a standard for how many spaces you're supposed to have per school based on the population. And with only a couple of exceptions, most of the schools have the parking they're supposed to have. Now, again, that's parking for staff.
For staff?
Yeah, there is no standards that says you have to have X number of parking lot spaces so that you can have it back to school night. The facility, am I correct? The facility standard is how many you have to provide for your staff. And my, am I, is that?
I mean, you know, we digress a little bit. In a sense, we are ADA compliant for all of our schools. That does not mean that it is necessarily, Garfield was a good example. There, the design and layout of that school, which was built in the mid-1970s, which was really built, in one sense, built to a different standard of ADA. We are, that building was compliant. However, that did not mean it was very easy necessarily. They were defined, there's a defined number of parking spaces for the building. It's all in code. We meet or exceed those requirements. That doesn't always mean that we don't go in and add some more because in some circumstances, that's necessary to meet the needs of student, staff, parents, et cetera. In other cases, depending on the specific circumstances, and I know you're aware of one, we added another sort of ADA handicap parking space closer to the building simply because while the parking spaces were valid, the ramp to the building was valid. Everything was in place. It was about 75-yard uphill ramp to get to the building. It's all compliant, but it wasn't easy. So there are circumstances as we identify them that we try to go out and look at them and see how we can adjust them. And I don't know that that's as much of the infrastructure task force, but we will continue to look at that.
Is that, since you're here, is that a costly endeavor?
It can be.
Okay.
We had a, we have a bullet item here on slide 12. We didn't talk about it much, but we, the third, the bottom item, there was additional onsite parking, 2.2 million. That is, you know, it's not a small amount of money. It's certainly less than putting activity rooms in all the schools that don't have them. So there may be some specific schools that are particularly troublesome. And again, when I talk about these costs tonight, we're talking elementary school level. I don't know what it would cost because we haven't talked about it yet, but we will. I'm sure that's something that will be talked about when we get to the middle schools.
Even if you take a look at Minneville Elementary School, the building sits sunken and the parking is up here. And if you have a wheelchair, you can't use the stairs to walk down to the door. So you come around in, it's not, it's not the street, but it's the driving area. And so when you come around to say, take a door, another door, it's not handicap accessible. So just for that, if you don't mind taking a look or sending someone out to look at that, please. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. There'll be Mr. Deutsch and Ms. Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question about the spreadsheet. There's, since we're talking about parking, there's this, there's this parking deficit calculation. Can you explain what that, there's pluses and minuses in this parking deficit calculation? Can you explain what that?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Klein, I think. Basically, there is a standard number of, you know, again, there is a standard you use to determine how many site, how many slots you're supposed to have. And that calculation is showing you according to that standard, which schools are deficient. And there was only a few of them, as I recall. That doesn't mean there is all the parking each school could want. Also, one of the issues you run into with some of the schools that are deficient is there's simply no place to put any more parking. They're very tiny sites. But that's, you know, when we say we're, as we talk about compliance, the fact that we are technically compliant doesn't mean it's ideal. But in a lot of sites.
The numbers are a plus and a minus from a predetermined ratio?
The numbers are, well, we'll let, we'll let the expert talk.
Good evening. What we did with this matrix was we took the brand-new, or brand-new elementary school, the average that we're able to get, and that is very site-specific depending on the topography of the site. And then what we did was we looked at, we made a ratio of that between the number of students. And then we addressed that back and forth with how many students were on our population of that particular site, if that makes sense. It was a ratio back and forth, trying to equal it so that they all had the same amount.
Makes sense. And then, so on the parking matrix and the gym and cafeteria square footage, there are some cells that are blank. Why are they blank? As opposed to having zeros?
Do you want to, do you want to identify specifically? That might be easier in the sense of.
Don't forget, you've got, every school is represented there. But some of those schools either have already been addressed for that particular item or they're already in the CIP for that particular item. What we're trying to call out here is the costs that are not already addressed in the CIP.
So is your gym square footage number, the number of additional gym square footage that should be added?
If, I can use Kohl's as an example.
Sounds good.
Kohl's doesn't have a gym. It has an activity room and it has a cafeteria. So we've labeled the cafeteria square footage, not trying to portray it as a gym. In other words, the schools that are blank are schools that do not have a gym. If you were to go to.
And then what is, what is a school like Covington Harper or Noakesville School that's listed as not having cafe or a gym have?
It could have just been that we left that off the sheet. It certainly has a gym and a cafeteria. And what we've done with that is we split the multipurpose room into a gym and a cafeteria to get a total square footage. And we might have just, you might have caught one, we missed.
Okay. Yeah, there's a few where both of them are blank, so. Anyway, okay, just trying to understand that.
Not a data to look at. We realized that. It was a bit of an eye chart for us as well.
Yeah, no, all good, all good. Is there any sort of prioritization of parking in relation to the availability of off-site parking? So some elementary school that's easy to park in the neighborhood, some it isn't. And so for back school nights, you know, it can be a challenge in some of those schools where to.
Well, I can only speak to, at the eastern end of the county, I can only speak to Kilby because that's the one we went to visit. And parking down there would probably be very challenging off-site because it's a densely populated neighborhood and a lot of people are parking their car, their own cars on the street. Some of the older neighborhoods in the Gainesville District, up not too far north from where you represent, in the Stonewall area, again, those are fairly densely populated neighborhoods. And so if you haven't got parking onsite, you probably don't have a whole lot of parking off-site either. It is, parking is a challenge everywhere. I know at, what is it, Westgate? Westgate has the swim club across the street. Well, that does provide some extra parking. But most of the schools are not in a position to take advantage of things like that because they typically are in residential neighborhoods where there isn't a neighboring business that has a large parking lot that's available after hours. And I'm not sure what we do about that. It's hard enough getting the land we need to build the new schools, let alone additional land for parking.
I know one of the elementary schools in that, Manassas, next to the woods is getting some additional parking. They're very appreciative. What about, so is there any look at piping systems and electronic wiring systems and them aging out? And what that replacement schedule is?
The piping, such as water piping, that's really not a CIP issue. I mentioned earlier in the presentation that while we did talk about that kind of thing, that's not something that is dealt with under the CIP. That is ongoing maintenance that staff does on an ongoing basis. And when issues are addressed, they deal with them. That's not something that we were looking at because we were focused on. That's not something that we were looking at, because we were focused on what goes into the CIP. In terms of the electrical wiring, Dee, maybe you can-
When we plan for the CIP as far as renewals and renovations, we certainly look at all of those things. And as we start planning some of the renovations that are upcoming, that you'll see in this year's CIP, we certainly have taken that even to, into more account. We've got now a very good matrix with our new, with our software of School Dude, where we can tell how many work orders we have, when equipment is wearing out. We've got a whole lot better handle on that than we did in previous years. So, yes, we are looking at that, but not part of the infrastructure or the differentials between the schools.
It really comes more under the ongoing maintenance, which is a different category. It's the kind of thing where, if you're having a serious wiring issue, you're going to go ahead and you're going to deal with it. You're not going to wait for the CIP. This is my impression.
All right, thank you. Ms. Arnold?
So, I, first of all, I wanted to say that the idea of flexibility for where funds are allocated within schools makes total sense. Every school has different needs. And at the risk of this question stretching outside the bounds of this task force, I'm not exactly sure what those bounds are. I was just curious if there was a recommendation for how to allow for this degree of flexibility while still preventing the risk of misallocation of funds? For example, do you all recommend that funds are allocated to schools, saying that it can go to the list of suggested areas on the spreadsheet? Or is there another way that you guys were envisioning this happening?
We put some boundaries on it, but we didn't want to make it too specific. We didn't want to say, okay, school X gets a science room and school Y gets an activity room. What we did say is, we want each school that's in a deficit state, the older schools that are in a deficit, each school should get at least one additional instructional asset of whatever type. So that all of the elementary schools that are not currently scheduled to have these things done would get added to the mix. And over the next 10 years, every one of the older schools would get one, at least one additional instructional asset. So, from, it would, it would involve, you know, putting money into each school, but leaving staff some flexibility as to, at each school, what is the best use? I mean, the principal, the staff, with site-based management, they'll have some opinions about what they really need for that school. And the main thing is that they get something. Each school gets something, and every school feels like they've been given some help. But, we're not, we want to keep it flexible enough so that we don't tie people into something that they really rather not have. And every community's going to feel differently about it. Every school, the parents at every school have, have strong feelings about what they, what they would like to see that school offer. So, we're saying, give each school some help, but leave some flexibility. Does that answer your question?
So, yeah, when we're talking about flexibility, I just want to confirm and make sure that I'm not misunderstanding at all. We're not talking about giving principals a blank sum for suggested areas. We're talking about the board specifically saying, within schools, that this is where it should be used, or how, how are you visioning it?
We're saying that what it should be is instructional space, because we're focused on improving instructional space, and that staff work with the board as the, as the CIP is put together, to make sure that this is allocated fairly among all the schools that need the help. The staff of the schools will certainly have, you know, a lot of input on what's the best way to accomplish what they need to do. There may be some options where you could do it either way, and you may leave it up to the, the building principal to, you know, pick one or the other. But, there will be some bounds on it, in terms of, you know, what, what can be done most efficiently. We want to make the money go as far as it can go. We want to do these, package these things in such a way that we get the most bang for the buck on each school.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Sedgwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Richardson, it's great to see you up here, and thank you so much for your work and the work of the committee. We greatly appreciate it. I'm really glad you addressed parking. I, as you mentioned, Gainesville District Schools, I've got one newer one, I have two older ones, that a couple of those principals have said to me, please give me some parking, what can you do to help me get parking? One of them, the newer school, we used to have on-street parking, the subdivision changed things, and now we'd have no on-street parking and we're limited. Another school, and some parents have been ticketed there in Park and Ride, but we fixed that for now. Another school, back to school night, I overheard several times that the fire marshal had shown up, because we had people parking incorrectly. So, it's an ongoing issue. And Mr. Klein, I'll address that with you later on, too. So, thank you for that. And I appreciate the detail that went into this. I love the chart. It's so hard to read. I've got to get out my longer paper and dig it out of my cabinet so I can print it. And I was trying to enlarge it to read it.
Only an accountant could love it.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, I'm not an accountant, but, yeah.
I have to take the credit or the blame, depending on how you want to look at it, for the structure of that thing. Staff made it work, and I'm sure they had to sweat to make it work, but that was my, I came up with a rough idea for that. I should, I should stress again that we're not, because we have not stressed it in our prioritization, that doesn't mean we don't recognize that things like parking are not a concern. It's just that you tasked us to tell you what the priority ought to be. Obviously, if you can do anything beyond that in the CIP, it would be helpful. You know, you and I both know very well, and then it's the same all over the county, I'm sure, that parking is frequently an issue.
And that's when, parking and, in the morning, when you're getting to the high school level, getting to school, that morning drive-in can be an issue, too. So, if that's something the committee has a chance to look into, I know our community in Gainesville would appreciate that.
Well, we are heading into the discussion of the middle schools and the high schools, so we will be talking about students who drive.
Good, very good.
Quite certain.
And, so, looking at all of this, I like what you said about having each of the older schools add something at some point. And I know we've done a really good job at adding a lot of story rooms, activity rooms. You mentioned having the flexible space. And yesterday, I was at Mountain View in our Makerspace. School took a room that wasn't really being used for anything that was, I want to say there's storage in there before, but I really don't remember exactly what was in there before. They took a room and they decided, we're going to do this. And didn't ask for extra space. They had that area next to the library, and they turned it into this dynamic space for students to work. And so, you know, maybe at some schools, instead of building a room, maybe it's adding a trailer so a classroom can build, and can go in, and then we can put that space in the building. I don't know. Maybe it's some creative thinking so we can make some of these happen sooner rather than later. But, I like the idea of, let's talk with the principals, the community, because in one school, it might be Makerspace, in another school, it might be the Science Lab. I like Mr. Trenum's suggestion, how can we use activity room, or story room strings and possibly combine them? I thought that was a really insightful idea. And, so, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I look forward to seeing the next report from all of you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sedgwick. Anyone else? All right.
If I might-
Yes, Mr. Klein.
Do a brief. First, I would like to take the opportunity, certainly from a staff perspective, to thank all of, Mr. Richardson and all the members of the committee for all of their time they've already put in and continue to do so as we go into the future. We have a lot of nights and a lot of time spent together trying to work through this. In, in sort of looking at some of the underlying discussions and concerns going on, certainly our focus, and we're, when we're doing the elementaries and as we go to middle and high schools as well, is the whole discussion, as it's come out of, you know, equity amongst buildings. The, and a brand-new elementary school is always going to have its shining moment as the brand-new elementary school, and a 30-year-old elementary school will never exactly match a brand-new one on any given day. But, we do want to work to try and look at the total scope of the facilities, the scope of what's happening, and try and do our best to look at how things can become more equitable. We do relative, we have more discussion going on for high schools at the moment, it seems like. And that's really where we're looking at going into in the future, as we're moving down in, as we go forward. From the perspective of the committee, from the perspective of staff, a vast majority of what we're looking about is certainly to keep in mind, yes, equity is an issue. So much of what we're dealing with is simply physical structures of the building. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, and the analysis of what condition they're in is not a function of whether it's in the north or the south, or the east or the west. It's a reality of the analysis of that particular structure, and where, where it is, what happens, where it needs. And quite often, and almost always, what's truly driving the renewal processes is the status of the core infrastructure of the building, and that's HVAC and electrical systems and roofs and boilers. As much as we like to see what are the sometimes more cosmetic parts of the building, that's not the driving forces that are really getting us to have truly effective instructional spaces and having equity. We, equity also goes the other way. There's discussion sort of of, well, this is an east high school and a west high school. And I'll address that in two different ways. One is, it's an equitable issue, not just, it's elementary and middle and high school. All of those have competing equitable concerns, and it's not an east-west issue. I think one of the components, if we talk about high schools for a second, when we look at the, where our high schools are located, Brentsville is our oldest high school, then we go to Garfield, east, then we go back to Stonewall, west, then we go to Woodbridge, east, then we go back to Osborne Park, west. The next one after that was Hilton, that's actually considered east, because it's, if you look at the geographic structure of the county, it's on the eastern end. Then we came back with, what, Forest Park, which is actually east. We did Freedom and Battlefield, one on each end, east and west. And on the newest schools we're dealing with, obviously Patriots in the west, Colgan is in the east. It is, it is pretty well-balanced, if you're looking sort of at an east-west thing. The only high school that has truly been renovated is actually Potomac High School. We have done some partial renewals at Brentsville, Stonewall, Woodbridge, Garfield, and Osborne Park, and they continue to be things that we're working on. And again, those are components, as we go into the Infrastructure Task Force, to saying we need to look at some of that comparability, we need to look at our components of the systems, we need to look at what's there and how it matches up. All of this fits together, because what we have for the Infrastructure Task Force ties into our maintenance programs, it ties into our CIPs. An example is, since we keep talking about Woodbridge, in a sense, since 2005, we've spent almost $16 million on issues at taking care of Woodbridge High School. And that's a nice number, it's a big number. On the other hand, those are comparable kinds of numbers that we spend at Garfield, and Osborne Park, and Stonewall. Those are all significant amounts of money and reflect the priorities the board has put into keeping, taking care of and maintaining all of our schools. No, we can't match a 40-year-old high school to a brand-new high school, but we can do our best to try and, those things that are within our controls, HVAC systems, air, you know, air systems, heating, lighting systems, et cetera, to see if we can maximize those. And I think from, again, our CIP process this year, we will look at, again, the elements that are coming out of the elementary analysis. And as we participate and go forward, we add and take into account the middle school and high school components that we have going into the future. So, thank you.
Everybody's hitting buttons. It's Mr. Wilk. Mr. Wilk first. Everybody jumped into that one.
I want you to, I have an asterisk next to Potomac High School, because there's something, I want, I don't want people to walk away and think there was some specialty thing done for, you know, for a building. The building was incomplete when it was first constructed, so-
That's correct.
Can you explain that to the public, please?
Potomac High School, when it was built, which would have been our sixth high school at the time, was built on a limited budget, and in fact, was not built for the size and scope of the original design. It was, we have this much money, we're, we're stopping with this amount of construction. We went in there with an idea that we would do a renovation, but we were also doing an addition at the same time, to try and expand and complete the facilities there, partly because we anticipated things like Potomac Shore starting to come in, and the fact that we would have additional capacity in there. That doesn't mean it's perfect. A good example is the auditorium at Potomac High School. It sits in the very core of the building. It's about 600 seats, maybe? There's nothing you can do with it. It can't be adjusted, you have to tear the whole school down around it. Therefore, when we go to auditoriums, Potomac is not equitable in the size of, the scope of total auditorium space, but you really can't do anything about it. And then, of course, because it was sort of our first high school renovation, we did things to try and improve the parking lots, we added instructional spaces, we improved the specialty school program, we went into the football stadium and had areas there that were falling down, we did go ahead and build a fieldhouse. Part of it is, we were there, we're not going back for 30 years, 25, 30. We needed to do it. It's a vast improvement over what it was. It had some significant shortcomings going in. I could tell you a story about every single one of our high schools, probably every single one of our middle schools. But, again, part of this is then to tie in where are we at, what are the elements on each of them that are different, and to help look as we move forward with a matrix, at how we can identify and prioritize the most significant issues in each of those buildings. And in a sense, working with the community, the board, staff, et cetera, to pull it all together, so we can optimize our money, our resources, to best outfit and maintain our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Jesse?
Now, Mr. Klein. Why did you guys have to bring up Woodbridge? I mean, since the building was built in 1975, that would make it about 40, almost 40 years. We're talking about so many million dollars over that period of time. I've been over there, and so, I would prefer that, especially when people have been in the boardroom, talking about their school, that if we have something that, to say we've already done so much at Woodbridge High School, and they've been in this room several times, could we just keep it in the private conversations, because we are meeting with them? And I would prefer that, that be, because they will listen to this and decide, there's no point in us coming to this boardroom, because you've already decided that we've spent so many million dollars on you. I'm not sure where the millions were spent, but I've been over there and there's, there's some issues there. The same thing Mr. Brand said, he looked at Stonewall, and when, on our committee, I think we were at Dean Noakesville, which is, by the way, a beautiful facility. I hadn't been in there. It's gorgeous, glass everywhere. You know, I don't, I don't want to get into this race thing about race and the equities in terms of race, but I think that there are parent groups that are more comfortable in this boardroom, and more comfortable in advocating. And so, when they come to the boardroom, I just don't want that to be misperceived. And I know that you didn't mean for it to be misperceived, because you and I are buddies.
I would not like it misperceived, because I certainly believe that each and every time that there is someone here that talks about any facility for any school that's, that comes and talks, we listen and we take notes, and we go back and look and see what's there. My, my opinion in that sense is, yes, as they're describing things at Woodbridge High School, I see very, from my perspective, I see a very similar set of circumstances to Garfield, to Stonewall, to Osborne Park, all of which have needs and all of which we need to work on. That eventually becomes-
But, they didn't come in the boardroom. They did not come into the boardroom. And so, I would like for this discussion about Woodbridge High School and what you guys see at other high schools, because the other high schools didn't come into this boardroom. So, if we could keep that on a private basis, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Walts, yes, sir.
I, I would just like, the figure that you stated for Woodbridge, that was, what was the figure?
That was from 2005.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Walts.
Just, just, I'm going to go out, you know, just speaking, just for myself, obviously the task force hasn't had a chance to dig into this yet, but I would imagine that what we do with the middle schools and the high schools is going to be a lot more tailored to the individual schools. The elementary schools, we came up with a much more uniform recommendation, but every high school and every middle school is going to have its own unique set of circumstances. And I think we're just going to need to be more sensitive and make sure we get input from each school in terms of what concerns them the most. Obviously, it would be better if, we're going to spend some money at a school, that we at least spend it on the thing they want us to spend it on. If we can't spend it on everything, let's at least fix the most important issues. But, that's, that's a discussion we'll have to get into in the coming year.
Done. Not so lucky. Mr. Deutsch, you're up.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to both of you, because I think the conversation that this task force was meant to address is the issue of equity across all of our schools. And so, understanding what the inefficiencies are, what the balances are, that, that's important. And so, I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Klein's comments about the differences between our high schools, because age is an important factor. And I've got a number of concerns with OP and Stonewall, they're both very close to where I am, and, you know, there are, there are things that need to be improved. And I think we all, we all recognize it, and we work in different ways to improve, you know, all of our older schools. all of our older schools. And so, where we can keep working equitably across the county to address our issues is critical, and there's nothing wrong with bringing that up when that's, that's the issue at stake here. And, you know, I think the, the point was just made about not wanting to inflame based on race and sides of the county and whatnot, but apparently whichever school board member has been emailing back with parents has been actively inflaming along those lines, and we need to knock that off so we can actually help our kids and understand the facts and the ground related to age and how we keep our older schools up to date.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we are on to the final Superintendent's Time of 2017. Dr. Walts.
Thank you. First, our Parents Summit is quickly approaching. It will be Saturday, January 6th, from 8:00 to 11:30 at Hilton High School. Parents and guardians of eighth graders and high school students should register in advance. Just search for Parents Summit on pwcs.edu or high school websites. On December 20th, Battlefield High School students will visit Sinclair Elementary School to donate computers and provide training to 30 families. It's part of the Virginia Star program that lets high school students work on donated computers to gain valuable technology skills that lead to industry certifications and employment. It also brings real educational benefits to the students and families who get the computers. Nine Battlefield High School student teams are competing in the Cyber Patriot Cybersecurity Challenge this year. Participating students will find and fix vulnerabilities in software and networks. Our team, 1619, is currently tied for second place in the state of Virginia. Most of what I talk about in Superintendent's Time includes student, staff, and school accomplishments. Sometimes people wonder why I emphasize our successes over the challenges, so I hope this next item shows how the two go hand in hand. When Belmont Elementary School's 2015-16 Standards of Learning Test results came back, they told us we had a lot to do to improve teaching and learning in several areas. For example, the pass rate in science was only 43%, so we turned that challenge into an opportunity and a commitment to doing better. We used instructional coaches and professional development to help our teachers and staff. Together, they used hands-on projects and other creative teaching techniques to better engage students and help them use data to see where they needed extra work. So, we have some posters, we're putting it up, you can see one over on that side of the room, we have it in front of you now. Up on the screen is a poster we just presented at a state education conference that highlights signs of success. The poster shows what happened when Belmont got its 2016-17 SOL results one year later. The math pass rate went up 12 points, reading by 13, and history by 17. Science had shown the weakest performance a year earlier, so teachers gave it special emphasis in the classroom. This resulted in a 38-point jump in the pass rate in nothing and is nothing short of fantastic. This isn't just about the test results, it highlights the real teaching improvements that made a difference in student learning. Congratulations to all the teachers, coaches, administrators, and staff who made this possible, and to the students who are the real success stories. I show you this tonight because we know we can always improve and do better. When results show us where we need to improve, we redouble our commitment and work on getting better. Congratulations to Belmont Elementary School for showing us what we accomplish when we all work together. They are a real sign of success, and this promotion sign of success is done by the State School Boards Association, and it was featured at a recent state conference of the Virginia State School Boards Association. Elsewhere, robotic competitions are in full swing. We had 32 middle and 32 high school VEX teams compete at Osborne Park on December 2nd, and Woodbridge High School will host the largest VEX tournament in Virginia on December 16th. 50 middle and 50 high school teams will battle for spots in the VEX state tournament. Just would like to remind the board, as I love doing, in 2005, we had one robotics team. Seven teams from five elementary schools represented PWCS at the Virginia DC First Lego State Championship. Congratulations to Old Bridge, Alvy, Henderson, Marshall, and Penn Elementary Schools. I ask all employees, parents, and students in grades three through 12 to provide important feedback by taking our annual survey. It is tailored to specific stakeholder groups, please look for it and respond between January 9th and 29th. I would like to congratulate two longtime employees on their retirement. One was just up here just a few minutes ago. I'm not sure he's still here, but we'll tell him about it. Warren, we call him Dee Thompson, is retiring after serving 29 years in the Office of Facility Services. Of his thousands of accomplishments, most notable during my 13-year tenure, he oversaw in 13 years the construction of 23 new schools opened on time and within budget, with a recent capstone success of Colgan High School and the school division's first swimming pool. Darlene Falls worked more than 20 years in the Department of Human Resources as supervisor of recruitment, and has more than 30 years of service in public education. Over that period of time, of the thousands of new hires she helped facilitate for Prince William County Schools, most notably during my 13-year tenure, she led the efforts to increase the diversity of our instructional staff. Her minority recruitment efforts increased our teacher diversity from 12% in 2005 to 22% this year. And for someone who used to be the head of HR, used to be the Keith Johnson of Baltimore County, we are competing with lots of school systems, not just Northern Virginia, but Maryland and DC as well. So, best wishes to Dee and Darlene, thank goodness for ROP because we'll be able to utilize their talents after they're gone for a few days a year. And in closing, as the winter break nears, I wish everyone a wonderful and safe holiday season, and best wishes for the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. It's the first time I'd learned we had a pool. I didn't know that, I hadn't heard about it. Yeah, wonderful. The Keith Johnson of Baltimore City Schools, that is a new title that I'd never, never heard of.
Baltimore County.
Baltimore County, not city, I'm sorry, Baltimore County. Yeah, my brother went to UMBC, I should know the difference. All right. We've got a revision of Policy 648 dot 01, Activity Participation Before Testing Days. First reading, Ms. Cos.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyer, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, we are recommending revisions to Policy 648 point 01, Activity Participation Before Testing Days. The recommended changes are focused on ensuring that we are encouraging student participation in the PSAT, SAT, ACT, AP, IB, and Cambridge tests. The regulation that you see, those changes specifically define prohibited activities that would discourage student participation. That's it?
Is that everything? This just, I don't know if there's any comments for the board, this just looks like a simplification basically of the policy, is that, is that what I'm saying?
More explicit language.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything bigger than that. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much. And the even more simple, 1902, deletion of Policy 406 dot 01, Inspections. First reading, Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walts. The item before you, as we go through our regular review of policies, in the conduct of that, we identified the fact that Policy 406 point 01 should be deleted because it's already covered under Policy 737, which is searches and seizures. Therefore, we're recommending deletion of that policy. It has no impact on overall policy or guidance because it's already covered.
And there's no, did I read correctly, there's no regulations attached to that?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Every board member will now get the same amount of time that Mr. Klein was just at the podium for their board matters. I'm just kidding, Ms. Satterwhite, I am going to start with you, though, I think I started at the other end last week. Ms. Satterwhite, the floor is yours.
I was totally not ready for that.
I apologize.
It's okay. I want to thank everybody who came to the meeting tonight. We had quite a crowd here to start the evening, now it's really quiet. I want to wish everybody a very happy holiday and a safe holiday. I really had hoped we'd have a snow day this Friday, but it looks like it's not going to pan out. I hope everybody enjoyed the snow last weekend because it might be all we get until January. I had a wonderful time going to a Coles and Brentsville District presentation, Osborne Park High School, Brentsville District High School, and Patriot High School combined for the Messiah at Hilton Performing Arts Center. It was absolutely fantastic and enjoyed having the invitation for that and attending. My husband actually went with me, and we really enjoyed that. I was just at Mountview Elementary School yesterday, as I mentioned, the Makerspace, filming my board briefs. It was such a joy to see the kids at work yesterday in that Makerspace. They came in first thing in the morning, right after announcements, and they were on task, they were on target, they were engaged, and it was dynamic to watch them at work. It was so exciting. So, thank you to Ms. Harrison, Mrs. Dufray, and everyone there for the warm welcome and for letting us take up their time yesterday for the board matters taping. Look forward to attending several schools over the next couple of weeks as we get ready before the holidays. And again, a reminder, check to see if your schools have any performing arts events as we have the winter concert season, and also Battlefield High School, because of the snow cancellations last weekend, they will have their play presented, I believe, two different shows this Saturday, so check out and support our schools. Happy holidays, everybody, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try and be brief. First off, I want to say thank you, Glen Kirk Elementary School chorus did a wonderful job, sang beautifully, and it's always good to see our, our students come out here and perform so wonderfully. One of the advantages to being a school, a school board member that I've enjoyed over the years is the opportunity to congratulate and embarrass my own children at times. So, I do want to take advantage of that, and one of probably the last few times I get the opportunity to. My son, Walker, this is early admissions time for colleges, and that's, those, those, things are coming back, and Walker was accepted into Virginia Tech in their Pampers School of Business, so we've got that stress relief going on for the family. Congratulations, Walker, once again. My baby is a senior, so that, I'm getting older. But the last thing I just wanted to say is, tell everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, enjoy the holidays, we will see you all back in January.
Thank you, Mr. Trenum. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have very little to say, but I'm glad to see everyone today, and I hope to see you in the new year. Also, if anybody has any great ideas about doing something, anything that will help to relax people as we sit here forever, so, if you have any ideas that will help us, let me know. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Everyone's following the rule pretty good so far. Mr. Wilk? Oh, boy, Mr. Wilk.
Yeah, so, so, and everyone's gone quick, so...
Just don't be as loud as your jacket, that's all I'm asking. Yeah.
That's a good, I want to first, I did not buy the jacket, thank you, so I know I've worn some very bold ones, but this one, a fellow teacher bought it for me and asked if I would wear it. I said I would, it's Christmas, why not? So, never leave the teacher in me, and it was always fun to kind of dress up right before breaks and stuff like that. But, picking up, as you know, two weeks ago, I did not go to a lot of events, I was on a business trip, so this last two weeks, I really made an effort. First want to recognize, right after the board meeting of the last one, I did go, my wife and I had date night, we went out to Peter Pan at Grand Park, that was, she was really thrilled about that, but she's a drama teacher, so she enjoyed it. It was an excellent production, really enjoyed Peter Pan, Grand Park did a great job. That weekend, Saturday, I attended the VEX Robotics Tournament, which we've already heard a little bit about there. Two of my schools, Ashland and Triangle competed, it was hosted at Ashland. That evening, I did go, I was invited to attend Coach Bruden, Forest Park's football banquet. Despite the blazer and the look here, I did coach football for three years, and that might shock people. Middle school, and actually, a couple of my kids ended up going to Woodbridge High School. Good quarterback, Mike Majet, now plays at Indiana University, I coached him, I don't know if he would say I did a whole lot of coaching, but yes, so a lot of good Vikings kids went and matriculated up there from Woodbridge Middle. I had a, a thank you to the school board for electing, selecting me to be our representative at the BOCS Legislative Priorities Dinner with the new members of the House of Delegates and the Senate. It was another good dinner, two in like, like a week there, so they fed good food, so it was a nice event. Holiday concerts are happening right now, I attended Henderson's Choral and Strings Concert. I, of course, went to Forest Park's Breakfast, Breakfast with Santa, outstanding event. My five and two-year-old were not into Santa this year, and somehow after that event, the last week, my two-year-old has had nightmares saying that there's a bunny in his bed. I don't know where the connection has come with Santa, but I think it brought him back to Easter with the Easter bunny, and so, there's been a bunny in his bed, and I swear there's not a bunny in the bed, I'm not like cruel. I had the pleasure of attending Ashland's PTO Holiday Party on Saturday, it was a great theme, Dr. Seuss, The Grinch Who Stole Christmas, outstanding event. Last night, I was at Dumfries Elementary's Choral and String Concert. One thing I do want to, she's not in the room anymore, and I do want to recognize Shannon Garrity and PWA in general. Over the last two weeks, there had been a little confusion with, Ms. Jessie and I would know, this, when you're a teacher or a principal, you have to go through recertification and take hours and credits and basically courses and activities to be recertified. And something had come up, basically last kind of minute with technology certification points, that, working with Ms. Garrity, Riley O'Casey, I want to thank Senator, State Senator McPike for working with me on this. And of course, I want to thank our administration, I mean, the concern, the regard from Dr. Walts to Phil Cavet, to Keith Emon, to helping teachers navigate through this process and being very flexible and accommodating for this group and this batch of teachers going through the recertification. So, I do want to thank you all for that, and helping with that process with the teachers. I do have, is it, I have something, I wanted to ask Mr. Mulgrew a couple of questions, I don't know if you'd rather wait, it has to do, during my time, am I, or am I capped?
I mean, I, no, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it as long, I mean, it's not an, eh, I guess, go with it, and if it goes out of control, I'll let you know.
Okay, well, and, and only, and I...
All depends on what it is, I guess.
Well, yeah, right.
And, and Mr. Mulgrew, if you choose to participate or not, you know, totally your call.
So, no, the context of this, and this goes, and I did, you know, and I know it might have been past the agenda time, just so every member knows, you know, the chairman does have a right to not put anything on the agenda that we ask, and I did ask about, you know, potentially a presentation about specialty programs, which we very well could have in January, but again, I missed a deadline to his credit, so that wasn't up for discussion. But we have been, I am concerned a little bit, I've been getting, we've heard at, you know, during board, public comment time, I've received emails, and in general, I had some questions about some of the high school specialty programs, and it wanted to know, are there disparities between like the numbers that each of the high schools have? Have we taken ones away from buildings and without kind of really replacing it with something else? Basically, those are the kind of themes I'm hearing. I can tell you, I know what my two buildings have, and I'm not asking for a breakdown of kind of everything we have, that could come at a later presentation, but I'm curious, you know, are there variations in numbers that each building have? Have we taken that, taken them away from certain buildings, as some people have said in emails and board, in public comment time? I was curious, and we could have a more detailed discussion in January, if the chairman or the vice chair permits with that discussion, but I was curious where we're at with that.
The, the reference on the last board meeting, and I apologize, I don't remember the date of it, but the last board meeting that, that we had taken the CFPA program from Woodbridge, we took that program and transferred it to Colgan.
Just for context, we see...
Oh, I'm sorry, the Center for Fine and Performing Arts.
I was thinking like theater, drama.
And that Woodbridge did not have a specialty program, and that cosmetology was its specialty program. I want to make sure that we try to give a little bit more context and information on the issue. When specialty programs began, Woodbridge High School was given, most schools were offered the opportunity to... the opportunity to choose their specialty program. Woodbridge High School was given the CFPA program. I just spoke with Al Ross just right before to make sure that my historical information was correct. The CFPA program, trying to put a fine and performing arts program into an existing building, was very, very difficult, and it didn't work very well. So Woodbridge High School, beginning with Dave Huckstein, actually began the process of trying to increase advanced placement opportunities for the kids in its building, and they moved and requested for the AP Scholars Program, which is now the signature program at Woodbridge as far as the specialty program. AP Scholars began with a Viking Preparatory Academy, which Huck ran in the summertime. It increased, at the time that we began that, we only gave six hundred AP tests at Woodbridge. We're now at somewhere between eighteen hundred and two thousand. We've almost tripled the numbers. I believe the superintendent corrected by allowing Woodbridge a historical wrong that was done to the school by not offering the opportunity for input into their specialty program. And the AP Scholars Program, coupled with Patriot, became one of the most preeminent because as soon as the AP Scholars Program came in, we began the capstone program, which I believe is the best college preparatory sequence in Virginia.
So if I have two at one of my buildings, and maybe my other one might have two or three, you're saying then there's only one technically by number there, or?
We have the AP Scholars Program, which I believe is the signature. Most transfers that come to Woodbridge, that come into Woodbridge, come in through AP Scholars. We have Project Lead the Way, and Project Lead the Way in the CTE program, it's the engineering program, which is, I think, a very, very fine program. Carlos Castro's done a wonderful job at Woodbridge High School. He's got to be one of the best engineering teachers in the whole state. That's another way that students could come in. And then the third would be cosmetology. But the information that's being put out that this was, cosmetology was the only specialty program because we moved CFPA away? Actually, for a time period, Woodbridge had both the AP Scholars and the CFPA program at the same time, and then we transitioned it to Colgan so that the facilities could match the program.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas and have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. We'll jump down to Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you very much. Let's see, last Friday, I had the opportunity to tour Coles Elementary School, got three students, showed me around their garden program, which is really exciting. They've got an herb garden outside, your regular flower beds, vegetables, and just the joy and enthusiasm. They're like, here, you know, touch these herbs and smell your fingers and all, and just, they knew inside and out what was happening at that program, how to take care of the plants, how to change, what their different growth cycles were, et cetera. They've got an orchard that they're all excited about. They were trying to replicate off of what's happening at Monticello with some of the apples and pears. And they also have a butterfly garden. We're telling them about all the different butterflies and then different nature certifications, essentially, they have to get, they've gotten with all different kinds of animals and birds that they've been able to track. So just that joy and excitement, and then they were shown the different groups they have within the school and the kind of character development going on, and just that joy and enthusiasm, again, to learn from was really exciting. Also, want to follow up on Ms. Satterway, and the Osborn Park Handel Messiah performance is just incredible. It's a sixty, eighty-person choir, a full orchestra, and they've got pretty incredible soloists as well doing the solo parts, and then you've got a whole section of people up front to come with their Messiah books and sing along, and it's a, it's a great way to start off the year. Almost the whole Hilton Auditorium is packed out with it. They've, I think they're up to their fifth year now, and it's really become a staple, and everybody should go next year because it's just a ton of fun. And Handel's Messiah is just one of those classic Christmas performances, so. I think on that note, Merry Christmas to everybody. We all get a bunch of weeks off, so hope everybody gets to relax and looking forward to the new year and getting into budget season.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch, and Ms. Jessie.
Thank you very much. I, I've had several meetings where this testing and the use of testing has become a topic. I think it's going to be very important for us to get ahead of the curve and maybe perhaps have someone in the boardroom come in and perhaps do a presentation on the difference between assessment and testing. We were talking about Finland and what's happening in Finland, and there are many differences in Finland. There are things that we could be doing like Finland, but there are also some things, there are some caveats. For one thing, Finland has, their kids don't go to school until age seven because they get preschool education, and they're ready for school when they come to school. There are several other differences that I won't go into detail tonight, but perhaps when we talk about assessment. I'm pleased that we have put our Head Start Program on the agenda for January because they're making enormous progress, and I would like to see that showcased in some way. Speaking of Woodbridge, must be Woodbridge Night. I don't know. I don't know if Woodbridge has any problems. I do know one thing, Woodbridge is doing a phenomenal job, and that school is on fire. When I went to the semifinals, and I looked at their field and looked at our field, and when I looked at our scoreboard that wasn't working the last time I saw it, and they had a brand-new scoreboard that was working, and they had huge kids, football players, and I thought, ooh, I hope we win. But that school is not whining. They're not whining. They're doing phenomenal things, and especially when it comes to students, Student Senate Learning, and just because they're asking for a few things. So I'm going to request that Student Senate Learning and Mrs. Heather Abney and her staff be invited to the boardroom as part of the showcase. And I would like to see if we can work that out down the road. Other than that, Lori Williams wanted me to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. She couldn't be here tonight. And she also wanted me to give a shout-out to Woodbridge High School because she attended Woodbridge in nineteen ninety-five. And I would like to wish this board Happy New Year and holiday wishes. And it is a pleasure to have you on the board as a student. The three of you, I think, are going to take our jobs. I don't think we're going to allow you to speak anymore because you're better than us. I am just so pleased with your capabilities and your insights and your sharing. And again, to that committee that selected these three individuals, you did a phenomenal job. And I want to thank Mr. Emon, and I hope I pronounce your name correct, Ms. Galata? Yes. I want to thank you for helping tonight because we had a hundred and twenty kids in this boardroom, and you worked out everything for me with those students. Those students will never forget this night, I assure you, and thank you very much for doing what you always do. You're always good at what you do. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, Ms. Jessie, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you to Glen Kirk for bringing your kids down, and also the Woodbridge Football Team for coming down. I know it's not necessarily what everybody wants to do on a Wednesday night, but they were wonderful. Obviously, I attended the concert that Glen Kirk did a week or so ago, and they were amazing, and we all squeezed in there, and they did quite an amazing job. That was all I was going to say today, and then Mr. Wilk had to go ahead and mention IU, so I have to be real quick here, Mr. Wilk. I just want to make it clear that...
I'm from West Virginia.
I just want to make it real clear, I have been to West Virginia. That's been established, is that, just want to make it real clear that, you know, my four years at Purdue University with the baseball program, that the old Oakland bucket, which goes back and forth between IU and Purdue, Purdue has won that fifty-nine times to IU's thirty-one. So I just want to make sure we're real clear on that, so if you get an IU reference in. But I did look up, us up against your alma mater, Michigan State, not so good. You got us a little bit there, so. But I always do appreciate it. It is great to see these kids move on, and I didn't, you know, I know I mentioned to them a little bit, but you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who go get a college degree simply because they still want to chase that athletic dream, and I'll come back to you. And they still want to chase that athletic dream, and you know, there's a reason they call it a student athlete, because you have to have the student part down first before you're allowed to be an athlete, whether you like it or not. Those are the rules, and it helps, it helps young men and women as well, you know, work towards a college degree, and that's very, very important. And Mr. Deutsch, did you have one more thing to say before we? Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot this. Monday afternoon, Bob Icorn sent the school board an email, and he gave me permission to share it, and I did. You should check it out because Borstobee republished it. It just shares the story of Rita Goss and her caring for people in the community during Thanksgiving, and she deserves a big shout-out.
Yeah. And with that, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, happy whatever you celebrate, Happy Holidays, and with no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.